We're going to go ahead and start our regular council meeting. And if I can get everyone to stand, we're going to have an invitation. Most gracious heavenly father, we want to thank you for the opportunity together here today. We ask your love and your protection and your compassion towards those folks that protect our country, that serve in our armed forces. We guide them and take care of them. We ask that you watch over our community and we thank you for our community and we want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. We ask that you guide us and direct us to make the best decisions and give us strength. In your son's name we ask, amen. Let the record show that we're all here and we'll call a meeting in order and Councilwoman Bedosan will lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
On pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. It is at this time that we're always glad to welcome visitors and receive public comment and we want to thank everybody who's here today. We just finished a public hearing for the county and we're glad that y'all are still here and we're glad that the staff is here. Brian, we're glad you're here with us today and Gil, it's good to see you. If there's anyone that would like to make any public comment to the council, this is the time that will take for you to do that. If not, then we're going to move on in our meeting to our agenda. We would like to approve the minutes of the March 11th meeting of this year. I pray that y'all review those minutes and I'll make a motion to approve them. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to consider resolution R 752-0519 that canvases the return of the city general election that was held on May 4th. This resolution canvases that election and allows us to make confirmation for the election and the number of votes that were cast and the winner. I have the official envelope that was kept in a meshing jar since the day the election was held. The return sheet says that Juan Chavis received 26 votes and Colt Ellis received 46 votes. Are there any questions or anybody like to review that? Motion to accept those results? Alright, motion and a second to accept the results of that election. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Congratulations. Mr. Ellis? Can we stop now and read those bylaws, please?
We can do that. Leupi, if you want to come down here, we'll do yours first.
By the way, congratulations.
Raise your right hand and repeat after your name. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Leupi Bedosan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmember District 2.
Councilmember District 2.
For the city of Muleshoe.
For the city of Muleshoe.
And will to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Raise your right hand, repeat after your name. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Colt Ellis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmember District 1.
Councilmember District 1.
For the city of Muleshoe.
For the city of Muleshoe.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's cool. Alright, now we would like to elect a mayor pro tem. Our charter allows that the council do that at the first meeting after the election. And we need to elect one of those to the office of mayor pro tem. So I will open the floor for nominations. We have a motion and a second to nominate you as mayor pro tem. Is there any discussion? If not, is there any?
See that triangle?
It's not a real question. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Mayor, would you go back then to item number three? Backup.
We moved that.
We did.
Oh my goodness.
You skipped that? Well, let's just back up.
You took care of all the pertinent items all at the same time. You kind of had to have.
Well, you know, we just used to canvass and the election and then.
We do.
Administering those votes and stuff.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize for skipping that. So what we're going to do now is to consider resolution number R 753-0519 authorizing the submission of a multi-jurisdictional community development block grant application. And I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution. We have a second. Is there any other discussion?
This is for what?
For the hearing that we just had. So they can acquire the funds for possibly to find new ambulances. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Alright, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Sorry I skipped that one.
That's okay, I thought Colt was already.
Trust me, the lady who went there would have noticed for good before we got through.
Thanks Judge.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now we would like to consider reimbursement of receipts from Muleshoe Road Riders for their 2019 motorcycle rally from hotel motel tax runners. Earlier, we had approved up to $2,000 of authorized expenses. And they brought to us receipts of $1,138 and the staff reviewed those and the staff recommended that we approve that number. Make a motion to do so. Motion and a second to approve that amount of money. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing we want to do is consider revised drought contingency plan. The TCEQ requires that our drought contingency plan be reviewed by the council annually and many revisions are made every five years. Is there anyone that has any suggestions or information that we should change that drought contingency plan?
Actually, Ramon, our public works director, has reviewed that and has made revisions and offers that to you for your consideration.
Okay, alright. If you'd more than that, answer any questions. Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve that contingency plan. We have a second. Is there any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is consider approval of bylaws for type B Muleshoe Economic Development Corporation. Then I'll let you explain that.
Okay, well I'll kind of get it started and then I'll ask Casey to step in with this and Brian's actually also done work on that. Now, back in November, we moved from a type A to a type B corporation. So we actually ended the type A and then began a type B. And so in that process, then we're required to have new bylaws for the type B corporation. And so those are included in your packet. Casey, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I'll just say that Brian was really good to help us get a good set of bylaws. Lan and I kind of worked together to make a few revisions where they would work for us the most. And then the type D EDC board has met and offers those as recommendations to approve.
Alright, anybody have any questions of Casey or of me?
Motion to approve the bylaws.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve those bylaws for the type B MEDC corporation. Is there any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is consider recommendation from the MEDC, the board of directors, and Dustin Clevenger had resigned from the MEDC and we really appreciate his service in the past.
Dustin served on the board for seven years, I think, and we do, we appreciate the work that he did. But following the, in the meeting last week, Dustin offered his resignation. I think he's got lots of things going on in his business and personally and has decided to step down. So discussion at the EDC board meeting and they offered recommendation of Corey Hunt to be appointed to that board.
Okay, any questions about that? I'll make a motion that we approve Corey Hunt to be on the MEDC board. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider renewing the contract between MEDC and Leading Edge. We, let y'all talk about that. Anybody? Here's what we've been.
This is our third year.
Third year.
Casey, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. So they have been here, this will be on the third contract, like I said, and they've been a real asset to our business community. People that are looking to buy a business or start a business, they really offer some great insight on what the actual steps are to do that and give some good, real-world advice on how to grow a business. And we've had several success stories and I've been posting a few of those testimonials on the EDC Facebook page and stuff. So this will renew another contract at $12,000 for the year.
Should I add to?
Sure, absolutely.
I think we've definitely added at least two jobs.
At least.
At least two jobs through them. I mean, that was directly from them. And we've had a handful of other businesses use their services and stuff through us.
Good. Sounds good. I'll make a motion that we renew that contract. Can we have a second? Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to receive the agreement summary for the quarter ending March 3rd, 2018. I hope that everybody's reviewed that quarterly summary and I'll make a motion that we approve it. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, we need to receive a financial statement for the month ending April 30th of this year. Make a motion. Who receives that financial statement?
I said.
Motion and a second to receive that financial statement. Is there any other question or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to administrative, have I forgotten anything?
No, sir.
Good. That brings us to the administrative reports.
Thank you, Mayor. City employees participated in a weight loss challenge. We've done that the last three years or so. We do that for 13 weeks. A total of 42.9 pounds was lost by all those who participated. And Alex Castillo, who works in our public works department, lost 19 pounds. So pretty impressive. Just for everyone's information, the water park will open for the 2019 season on Tuesday, May 28th. So two weeks from tomorrow, the pool will be open. Youth fishing day will be on Saturday, June the 1st at Lake Muleshoe. The junior anglers will be here and also work with Texas Parks and Wildlife. So that's always a great day at the lake. Our ground storage tank project is nearing completion. Ramon, you want to talk about that a little bit, where we are?
Sure. Actually, today, we sampled the water and tanks depending on how they come back. That's how we proceed where if everything comes back, good, we're looking to start up at the end of this week, early next week. That being the case, we'll work out the kinks for a little bit and then we'll put it in operation. It's been a one-year project, so we're glad.
We're excited to be at this point.
Looks good out there.
It does.
Our airport project is progressing. We're expecting paving, paving right now is set to begin a week from today at the airport. So glad to be at that point. That grant project has been a five-year project for us and so it's nice to be getting, coming to the end of that project as well. And then Chief McCollum attended the Texas Police Chiefs Association Conference in Galveston. City of Muleshoe Police Department was honored for receiving our re-recognition status. So they did a, there was a slideshow, it was a, I mean, that's a really big deal. And so the chief was there to accept that on behalf of the department. And then finally, Casey Coker has accepted the position of executive director of the High Ground of Texas. Her last day as director of Muleshoe EDC will be Friday, the 17th this week. And so I know you all joined me in congratulating Casey on that. It's a promotion in her career and we're thankful for her work here and happy that we've been a part of that for her. So I know y'all will join me in congratulating her for that move in her career.
Join me and say, "Thank you."
Well, it's, I think it speaks highly of Muleshoe that Casey has been selected for this position. The High Ground of Texas, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
Just kind of tell them more about that.
So the High Ground of Texas covers 67 counties in the panhandle, all the way down to Midland, Odessa, Abilene, and San Angelo. So the awesome part about this is I'm still going to be working for Muleshoe. They've, Muleshoe's always been very active in the High Ground and I believe in the mission of the High Ground, all of us communities up here kind of get forgotten about sometimes. So we pull our voices and resources together and really get those people interested in the region because what's good for one of us will ultimately be good for all of us. So I believe in that mission. I think we've seen that over the life of the High Ground and I'm excited to be a part of that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's all we have, Mayor.
Wish you luck. Before we start our little budget workshop, we have some questions for the chief and his man.
Sure, yes, I was going to ask the chief.
You know, 60 days ago, we passed a new ordinance.
Yes, sir.
And for some of us that don't truly know the way all of that works out, we'd like for you to kind of review that process and tell us exactly how that comes to work.
Sure. Mayor, city council, just kind of follow up, kind of where we're at and obviously as y'all are abundantly aware, that that was a new ordinance for the city of Muleshoe. And because of that, we have tried to go above and beyond to make sure that all the residents were sufficiently aware. No code has gone out and gone above and beyond again to make contact with folks face-to-face, make them aware of it, explain the ordinance in detail and so forth. And nevertheless, we're still going to have folks come in like we did last week. We at least had one resident come in that was upset about the ordinance, but still we're going to, you know, we're pushing forward with that. So I know for a fact that we've been out, like I said, trying to educate the community as part of the enforcement. There's at least 10 locations right now that we're in the process of signing and/or sending notices out to. And the way that works, obviously, they've got the 96 hours part of the ordinance. We've ordered some new decals for the windows because the ones we had weren't reflective of what it needed to say in terms of that ordinance because it would cause some confusion that a lot of the decals and stuff, for instance, would say 10 days. Obviously, our ordinance speaks to 96 hours and so forth. So we need a decal that we can, you know, have that on those vehicles accordingly. And then once it's past the 96 hours, then when the summons would be issued. Once the code enforcement can make contact, if we can't make contact, then we, you know, we'll have to send it certified mail. It's kind of, and that's kind of the 30,000-foot version of what that process would look like and looks like.
So they have 96 hours after you make contact or we pass the ordinance?
We're, we were trying to educate folks now, the ones that have been out there, y'all seen them, I've seen them, that have been out there, I could, you know, months. So again, we were trying to make contact with them and make sure that they're abundantly aware of them. And every day that those are out there, then that's a subsequent citation in theory.
Okay. So you've made contact with them and they're aware and you already issued citations?
We're in the process. I actually just texted, I believe some citations have been issued and some folks we have not been able to contact, is my understanding. Because I sent out a list of violations last week and locations.
So after you issue that citation, how long do they have to?
Once the citation's issued, they have to come into court, which is generally 10 days. And then obviously, if they don't move the vehicle.
They have 10 days after the citation's issued. And what's the normal fine?
I'm not sure what the judge sets that fine, so.
Oh, we did.
No, the judge sets the fine.
Now, the council sets the parameters of the fine and the judge sets the actual fine.
So at some point, that's to be determined, then they decide then to start issuing citations every day. If that's ignored, then every day is a separate offense.
Okay. And what if they just, it stays there and they don't come in and pay the fines? What if, what do you do then?
We don't have anything in the ordinance that gives us a, the ability to tow the vehicle. There was no, there's no language in that ordinance that says, like, an abandoned vehicle or a junk vehicle, those are two different things. But under the RV ordinance, there was no mechanism in place that put people on alert that if you don't move it, it will be towed. I know that would.
I'm sorry. The teeth of that will be that every day will be a separate offense and there will be a fine issued or set for each one of those offenses.
That would add up.
Yeah, that would add up. It was our thoughts on that. We didn't want to have to tow an RV and store an RV and then dispose of RVs. That, you know, of course, I mean, I think we always hope that people will want to comply. And we know, you know, we're required to publish in the newspaper. We know not everyone reads the newspaper. That's part of the reason that they try to make personal contact with all of those owners so that they're aware of the new ordinance and how this is going to work. Now, the 96 hours that you referenced, that is the time period that someone is allowed to have an RV parked at their residence. You know, we talked about, you know, having company come in for the weekend or something like that, where they would just be there.
Load, just travel.
That's right.
Or unload and want to get back.
That's right. But it's not meant for storage on the street.
So you actually located 10 different, okay?
Yes, sir. And now some of, some of those have been there for an extended period of time, others, you know, are more recent. There's about four and I'm not going to obviously go, go through those addresses or anything. There's about four that come to mind that have been there for an extended period that we, you know, tried to reach out to. And I know the code enforcement officers have had some difficulty physically making contact with some of those folks, which puts, you know, now we need, we have to send that through certified mail and then if they don't accept the certified mail, then obviously those fines continue to accumulate. So that's, that's kind of logistics of it. So there's some, if, you know, in an ideal situation, we're able to go knock on the door to one of our residents, it's been sitting there over 96 hours, please move it, this is your warning, so to speak, it's moved, end of, end of story. If it doesn't, then they would go back, here's your citation, three days later, one, two, three, in theory, again, the latter of the law, under that ordinance, would be additional citations. So that would be four citations potentially that they could, could receive for not moving it after that day.
Okay. So we can be assured that they'll all be taken care of next week unless there are just key fine fines.
Yeah, sounds like you're going to wrap this up and I'm not ready to wrap it up. In theory, in theory, all of this works. When we voted, I was on the fence. Man, do we need another law? And it was pointed out, no, we don't need any more laws, we need to follow up on the ones that we have. But I went ahead and voted for it anyway. One of these, I'm assuming one of these four that you're talking about, it's been six weeks, I came in and visited with some city personnel about it and they said, yeah, that it was, he was aware, it was, it was being handled, blah, 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 this stuff. Well, it's still there. So my question is, has he been cited? Because if he hasn't, then maybe we, at the next meeting, we need to take this law back off. If we're not going to follow up or follow it, if we're not going to, it's going to sit there forever, what's use having an ordinance?
Yes, sir. And I don't have that information available, I'll have that available at the next meeting of what exactly addresses have been cited at this point.
I don't know the correct address either, but it's real close to a school called Ilman. So, and it's dangerous. I think the kids are going in and out of school and they're trying to get vehicles through there and there's only room for two and then you've got the RV on the side. And I've been approached about that and I came here, I was hoping we would have gotten a little further along with that. So you're saying at the next meeting, we'll have a better idea?
Yes, sir. Well, my next step is actually I'm going to have police officers, actually, they can issue the citations as well. Since code enforcement, I've only got two part-time folks and they work a limited number hours a week. Then the next step would be that I'll have an officer go try to make contact with the resident and then cite him because they can enforce city ordinances just as well.
I would hope you wouldn't have to give us a report at the next meeting. If that all be moved.
Yes, sir. Now, one of the things I do, one of the things I do, and the city manager will kind of keep your pride of this, weekly, I do provide a weekly report in terms of what's going on, the calls for service and so forth, and include code enforcement violations in that.
Thank you.
Speaking of code enforcement, just remind everyone, code enforcement is working on weeds with the rain and stuff that we've had here lately with the weather. I think they're growing, I think we can almost watch them grow. So we would ask everyone to try to take care of those, just be in compliance with that, save our code officers the effort of writing letters and making contact for that because citations will issue on that as well. As also with junk vehicles. Seems to me for every junk vehicle we get taken care of, two more pop up. So they've been actively working on that as well. So for the public, we would ask you to try to take care of those as well.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Karen, when we looked at our packet before, I guess I just missed item number three that we approved. Could you tell us a little bit more about what's involved there with the ambulance, chance of the ambulance and all that? I mean, you're all been hearing.
anyway, could you get a little more detail on that?
Sure. So, the, this grant is through the Texas Department of Agriculture, and they are working to help, SPAG is working to help us, we have an interlocal agreement with them. Chelsea at SPAG is, is working hard to put that together for us. That grant is, they're offering $500,000 for a $5,000 match from the county, up to $500,000. So, we're putting in an ambulance, working on trying to see how much more equipment we can, we can put in there to, to use up as much of that as we can. And it has to be submitted by June 13. Kind of how this came about for the city rather quickly is we found out, I believe it was la, beginning of last week or sometime there was, that this, because we respond to calls in the city, we've become a multi-jurisdictional application, so we had to have a city as a co-applicant on this, on this grant as support for that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was approached by Mr. Chavez, and I know you are too. He said, and he had a question, and I don't know anything about it, about, is it, do we, have we locked the shooting range where you can't get in and out? Do you remember him asking you about that?
Mm-hmm. Okay. It's under construction, isn't it?
Yes, we're still, we're still trying to make some improvements. We've got sand out there, we're getting some air rotting and so forth, so we've got a little bit longer before feel comfortable about opening it up to the public due to the state that it was previously from a safety standpoint.
He just, he just questioned, and I didn't know anything, I couldn't even tell you where this place is. But I told him that I'd bring it up and see what the deal was.
Even when it's not under construction, it's always locked, and you have to go to the police department to get a key to be able to get in the lock to actually use it.
Kind of resetting that process, to echo a little bit what the mayor had said, that yes, once it's reopened, we'll have somebody come in to dispatch, there'll be a release form that they are required to sign, and the dispatcher on duty will notarize it, and then we also get a copy of their driver's lessons. So, we know who, obviously, we're, you know, signing out the key to a gun range, and we know who is going out there and who's ultimately responsible for that, given the nature of it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We're going to have a little budget workshop?
Yes, sir.
Just going to talk about the budget or anything the council wants to see on there, or what, what you like.
Actually, are you ready to go ahead and start that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're ready.
Just wanted to kind of give council a, a date. It's, it is budget time around here. We don't have numbers to present to council as of this time. I've received numbers from most of our department heads, and we'd be putting those in. Just wanted to talk to y'all a little bit about, you know, the city issued bonds three years ago for some of the large projects that we have going, the ground storage tanks, you know, we painted the elevated tanks, and built a new lift station. But in talking about budget, just wanted to know if there are things that, that council has in mind, is there anything that you would like for us to consider as far as progress or any of that kind of thing? Out of the ordinary, of the things that you do with everyday business that you would like for us to be looking at to include with budget numbers. So, we'll be putting all those together, we'll have some budget numbers to put out to council next meeting for actual, for your review. We, there's lots of numbers that we won't have in yet. Our certified tax roll, we won't have till the end of July. There are other numbers, insurance numbers, our liabilities, risk numbers that we won't have until, till early summer. But anyway, just wanted y'all to be thinking about that, and, and if there are things that you'd like for us to consider, things that, you know, long run, long-range planning, you know, we've talked about lighting at the city park, around the walking trail, you know, some of those kind of things, some capital things that might take a few years for us to be able to accomplish. Anyway, just wanted to give y'all the opportunity to, to start that thought process, so that you have input on that for us when we're working on those numbers.
I know we talked about once before about the lighting at the park, and we've kind of kicked around some numbers.
Yes, sir.
For what it might cost. Do you remember? Just the whole part?
Yes, actually, I've got some numbers today from a different company. We're looking at roughly $200,000.
Do the whole thing.
Do the whole thing. If we do part of installation, we can cut down $43,000. So, right now, I'm looking at $160,000 roughly to do that.
So, we did, let's say we did half of that, we did the backside first, where it's the largest, what do you, what kind of number would we maybe look at?
About 80, 80 to 100,000.
About 80 to 100?
Yes. Keep in mind that prices fluctuate.
Right.
Yeah. One of the things, and I really haven't talked to the city manager, you know, we kind of looked at four years to do the whole thing, but if we can do half, you know, it'd be great. But right now...
If the TDA comes out with a little leftover money from the grant policy, maybe we could put some of that in. So, I was kind of looking, just wanting to know about what it might, you know, where it might fit.
Today is 200,000.
Is it blank?
Today, it'd be 200,000.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Oh, I know that the last couple of years, y'all have been really busy. We've spent a lot of money, we've done a lot of good things, and so, it's, I don't know, it's a lot of us may have to really think about it for a few days to actually come up with something or...
Well, with the, with the support of the council, you know, some of these large projects, we've been able to assure some really good things for the city of Mule Shoe for the next 50, 75 years. And so, and that's, you know, council's, council's job is that vision, you know, for the city and where we're going and the things that we need to accomplish, and, and being able to provide that quality of life for citizens that, that they enjoy today, we want to ensure that for, for the foreseeable future.
You know, I always like to be complimentary of the council, and one of the things about that is that, that the majority of the public really does not realize where we spend their money and how we try to plan for the future. And some of the things that we've done in the past that kind of ensures, you know, some safety and quality of life for them, I know that, you know, to get better. Anybody else have any questions, comments? No? Okay. All right. And I think we all just adjourned.
Thank y'all very much.